Good evening. I'd like to call to order the council meeting of July 10, 2017. Please stand for invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. I don't see bodies, so if Councilperson Ellis would lead us, please.
Let us pray. God of all creation, we come before you today, giving you honor and praise. You are worthy of our praise. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all of our blessings. Thank you, God, for every gift that you have given us. We thank you also for the opportunity to come and gather together this day. We ask for your hands of blessings to be on this meeting. We ask for you to guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, full of productivity, and full of respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and helping us to accomplish our goals this day in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilperson Ellis. Have a roll call, please. Councilperson White. Councilperson Zostopny.
Present.
Councilperson Yon.
Present.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Here.
Council President Gill.
Here.
Councilperson Owen.
Here.
Councilperson Ellis.
Here.
Councilperson Samuel.
Here.
Let the record reflect eight council members present. And Sky did inform us at last meeting he is on vacation, and he did schedule that vacation before we switched meetings, so just want everybody to know that. I have approval of the minutes for regular proceedings of June 19, 2017. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Can I approve of the agenda?
There are no changes. Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Claims to be approved. Let's do the general first, as always, please.
We have claims tonight for $1,803,367.11 from the general claims. I didn't see any notes or anything that you left from Friday, so...
No, I just wrote it on the claim. We just had one PO that was after the fact.
Okay. I'll check on that.
So I'm just marking it on there so that way we have record of it. I just missed you, and Peggy was in her office, so I explained it to her.
Okay.
But other than that, all claims are in order.
Great.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Clerk's claims.
They're $85,366.83.
And I had all the signed contracts where it attached, all signatures, everything dated, everything...
I did have one question. At the bottom of page two and midway through page three, there's a, under the vendor, it's called Granite Payment.
Yes, that's the new credit card swiping machine that we have that goes through First Savings Bank now instead of West Banko.
Do we, okay, I added up over $555 worth of bank fees on that. That seems high for a credit card machine.
They have four machines, and it's like a lease-type thing of the machine.
I wanted to make a note also on the bottom, towards the bottom of page one, there's an $880 claim for a surveyor at Colston Park. Just for the record, the very most proximate to the interstate end of Colston Park, that's what was surveyed to determine, you know, how we might lay out an alternate entrance to that park, which is off of Maple. So that survey is not in relation to anything that redevelopment is doing or anything that the new potential development is going on, on the front end, on Mulberry.
Thank you for that. Any other further questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have reported the clerk. Okay. I have a situation I need to bring to you all. I've spoken with State Board of Accounts. When I received my budget for 2018, I noticed one of my employees, I noticed the two employees on my budget did not reflect the raise that had gone into effect as of January 1. So when I requested a new one, I noticed that the second deputy, which is the administrative assistant and works for the traffic bureau's salary was not what I had requested. It was a lot more, quite a bit more. It should have been, let's see, $36,573, and it was $38,474. So at that point in time, I did talk with State Board of Accounts, and they said that I have to bring it up to the council. You all have to, we have to have it reflected in the minutes. I also said as of June 30, for that payroll for June 30, the, it needed to reflect the correct hourly rate and the new salary. You will see in my new budget for 2018, there will be a decrease in that salary. That's due to the error. But the State Board of Accounts told me that it has to be brought to you all, it has to be put in the minutes. You can either make the decision that the employee has to pay the money back, or the decision that the employee does not have to pay the money back. But it has to reflect in the minutes. And if this had not been caught in time, and there would have been an audit, then I would have been responsible for paying the money back. So I have to have it reflected in the minutes and then send that to State Board of Accounts. We'll see that we did do the correct thing. I guess we need to have a little discussion here and some thoughts. Let's go ahead and let you know my thoughts. Well, go ahead.
Go ahead.
You know me, I speak my mind. I guess the concern here, I know that there was an error that was made, and it was an overpayment. I don't know if we ever verified what that amount was, but in my opinion is, and you all may disagree, I'm one of nine, that I think that money needs to be paid back. I know it was an error, but I also, I don't know how term, but it can be done over time. I don't want that person to be hit with a large amount. I don't even know what the employee knows or what doesn't know. That's not my thing, but that's just where, because I think if, I know errors and mistakes happen, I'm not saying that, but I think if, if something happens again, because, you know, we're not always going to have this control, or I'm always going to be the council, if somebody comes back and said, well, might be a huge amount, you never know. Say that, you know, somebody comes back and they were, we overpaid them mistaken, or a pension or something, they say, well, that employee didn't have to pay it back. That's kind of my way of thinking. I'm not trying to be mean, because, you know, me, I tend to be soft-hearted. I just worry about the presence we sent forward. So that's, that's my opinion on it, and I know everybody probably has it different, but just want that to reflect.
Was the mistake in the processing of payroll, or was the mistake made in the budget? Were we budgeted to pay what we have been paying?
The mistake was made in the Finance Department, where we keyed in the dollar amount, a dollar more than what it should have been. So the employee was paid a dollar more per hour for basically the first six months of the year. So that was definitely a mistake on our fault. And it was, it was not the clerk. She had filled out the paperwork all correctly. We, when we do all of the performance increase, we have four people sitting in a room. It takes a couple days to get it done, and even, even with all of those checks that we had, this did get, kind of slipped through. We have different procedure now that we're going to try, and hopefully this won't happen again. But this was definitely a mistake made on, by the Finance Department.
Was the mistake in the budgeting part, or in the...
It was in implementing the...
It was, it was...
Implementation.
Great.
So if we had not caught this until November, there would have been a possible deficit...
It would have showed that the budget was, oh, it was spending more, yes. At the, which was great, that, you know, Vicki caught it, that the amount that was paid was more than 50% of, of the pay. When we're looking at just a six-month period, it should have only been 50%. And as, as of the last pay, it was paid correctly. And I did have that discussion with the employee, too.
The overall salary for this employee? Salary, yearly salary for this employee?
It should be $36,573.
This employee is hourly.
And there was no overtime that was affected by it.
Okay, good. Thoughts, counsel? We do have a full agenda. I don't mean to, by no means rush, but speak up.
So what's the, what's the fix?
I've moved the expenditure to the Finance Department, because I do believe that it was our mistake, and it should not necessarily be reflected in the clerk's budget, so that her budget going forward will, will be correct for budget purposes. And then it's, normally I would think that if, I mean, I, like you said, you're one of nine, but I feel, I do feel like it was my mistake, and that if you want the employee to pay that money back, then, then I would be willing to do that. Because I do feel like it didn't, it shouldn't have impacted the employee. It was, it was our fault.
But it still has to reflect in the minutes according to State Board of Accounts. I mean, and they said it's their decision. This is a administrative decision or a council? No, it's the council's decision according to State Board of Accounts.
That is correct. The council has, because it's a financial issue, my question is, you are going to pay that personally?
I would. I personally would.
Personally pay that amount back? Because even if the administration, with all due respect, the administration's going to pay it back, if they're paying it back with tax dollars, you still have that.
No, no, it would be me personally. Yeah, I don't, I don't feel that it's necessarily the employee's problem. I mean, I apologize to her. I feel bad for it. I do take it very seriously, and, and I think that if, if I make a mistake, I'll stand up in here and say it.
Are you saying you pay for it personally because you asked that? Or is there room in the Finance budget to cover this expense?
There is room in the Finance Department to cover this, yes. Because we have money in our accrued benefits, that appropriation that can cover it.
And actually, we don't know how much is going to be needed till we get closer to October, November.
Closer to what? I'm sorry.
October and November, to where my budget starts going depleted on that line item.
No, I've already adjusted for the amount that was incorrectly overpaid and shifted that to the clerk, to the Finance Department.
The amount is what, $900?
It's a total of $1,056.
$1,056.
Yes. It's on this sheet here that I...
You've already adjusted my budget?
I just, like, within the last hour.
I don't think you should do that. I think you need to wait in order for my budget to stay the way it is. When it starts getting to the point of where it is getting close to where I would have to do an additional appropriation or transfer, that's when that money needs to go in there, because I want to make sure my budget is correct.
I thought your intentions were to not have it in the clerk's budget, but to have it shifted to the Finance Department.
You just moved the expense, not any money, correct?
I moved the expense of, of the $1,056, because that's what was actually paid from January to June 30.
So if I pull, if we pull the Finance Department's budget, there would be that amount coming out of your accrued...
It is still reflected in my budget.
accrued benefits and social security.
I understand.
But it still is reflecting in my budget.
When I was still working in private industry, I had the same situation happen to me one time. And I came in on the day that we got paid, and I got my check. And I looked at my check, and I said, there's got to be a mistake. I think I had about $5 on my check at that time. They had taken the money back, and they took it from me all at one time.
I think we try to be as accommodating as we can to the employees.
So the thing that I'm concerned about is whatever we decide here today will be a precedent for going on from now into perpetuity, really.
And that's just my main concern, like I said.
I think it's, I think it's very important when we're looking at setting a precedent. I've only been doing this a year and a half. It doesn't seem to be a recurring issue, putting new procedures in place to try to ensure this doesn't happen again. We're talking about someone who's making a total of, has the potential of making $36,000, is that what it is?
Yeah.
I think it's something that, if it's in the budget of the Finance Department to expense that, then we don't cause any discomfort to an employee who's doing their job very well, and that, you know, it's incurred this situation, not at their fault, that we should approve that expenditure or that expense being moved to the Finance Department. I think that's where I come from, because, you know, employees are just doing their job.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we're a responsible council, and that we don't expect every dollar to be allocated exactly. We prepare for emergencies to happen, things are going to come up, and I think that this is one of those situations where it was a mistake, something came up, and, you know, we have the funds to be able to take care of it. So that's where I'm at.
So then, for, to piggyback on Ron, so, and set a precedence, if there's somebody that's being paid $10,000 over what they're supposed to be paid, we don't know that. I mean, we don't know it, not this early in the year, and it may or may not rise to finances level until toward the end of the year, because if it was a key punch error, which it was, that could happen to anybody, then we overpay the next person $10,000. We just going to say, it's our bad, no problem. And if that's, if that's the take we, if that's the position we take, then I would want us to, to do some type of an audit on what, and audit may be too strong of a word, a close look at everybody's pay versus what they're supposed to be paid, to see if there's anybody else currently that's happening to, because it could be if it's, if it's a mistake. So...
Well, I do think that this, this time of year is kind of when that happens, is when the departments get their budget that we have, they kind of review them, and that's why we do it at June 30, so we can see that if it's been paid at 50% or, or less than or more than, and kind of ask those questions.
Basically, you have two options in front of you, okay? Option A is, you can say it's going to be paid back out of the controller's budget. Option B is, the employees pay it back, which administration is not going to have to require, the controller will pay it back personally.
So I had a situation in Harrison County. I have a contract with Harrison County to provide local services, and they had paid me twice. I get paid twice a month, so I get, I got a third check. So what they're going to do is, in August, they're just not going to pay me my two checks. But that's a larger, that's, that's not my only salary. So I'm fine with that. I mean, it's not my only income, so I'm fine with that. I think when we're talking about the salary that we are, I think this is more significant. And again, just, I think, not to cause, if someone, someone is being paid $20,000 more than they should, then I think they can afford to have to pay that back. But I think with the salary we're talking about, and the amount we're talking about, and the availability of the budget, I think it's appropriate for us to expense it to finance and move on.
Is there a motion?
Yeah. Well, I don't know if the conversation's...
Les, correct me if I'm wrong. So in, in no scenario will the employee be paying this back? It's either going to be, yeah, it's either going to be out of the finance budget or from Heather personally.
Paying back out of the controller's budget.
I just want to clarify that.
Yes.
Either to, say, what the employee is paying back, which if you choose that, then I'm assuming the controller's personally going to, I'm assuming reimburse that employee that amount, or if you say...
Reimburse the...
Her pay it out of her budget, and the tax dollars out of her budget are going to supplement that mistake. So that's kind of, you're not right. So there's a motion, and I think Mr. White kind of got to that motion of...
I didn't make a motion. We're in discussion.
Well, I can...
Make the motion.
I can support option eight, if that caveat is that there is a review done to make sure,
because the, setting the precedence and move forward, I understand this situation and think it's not, and I understand all that, and it's not the fault of the employee, but there's got to be, this is taxpayers' money, so there's got to be some accountability of that.
And I do think, too, that when, when the budget process is happening, and you all do get all those reports, and you see the differences, that you all do question and, and have questioned differences, and why, and that's why I think, too, that the increases that are potential increases for next year are budgeted under that performance increase, so that we can make sure that the amount is proper, but...
If we ask for a review to be done, is that something you could do and come back to us by next council meeting and say, hey, I've double-checked all the salaries, everything's squared away?
I can, yes.
With that, I'd make a motion. I'll just go ahead and make a motion.
The only issue a little bit with that is with some part-time, because it's hard to estimate what part-time amount, dollar amounts would be, but we can get with the departments and see.
And I just want to say one thing. I just... However, y'all vote's fine. I just need, when these minutes are done and approved, I have to send them to State Board of Accounts. Okay? Understood.
One thing that I'd like to say is, whatever decision we make, I would like to see us make some type of rule that we could live by into the future and not, not having to come back with the same type of decision.
That would be nice to have a policy, yes.
So you could... Go ahead, do it, go for it. I move that, I move that we adopt the recommendation of the administration and have the overpayment amount expensed in the Finance budget.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I do have something. Ed, you were going, you'd asked for her to come, come back. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So there will be that review.
Yes, I will do that.
All those in favor?
Well, and just to throw in mine, I don't, I'm going to vote for the motion, but because of the choices that are given, it's the lesser bad choice. The choice should have been that the employee received a dollar less for the remaining six months. Regardless of how much is at stake, fact of the matter is the employee was overpaid. Everywhere else in the galaxy, the employee would have to pay that back. And we could work out a deal with that person, we could make a half and half, there could be all kinds of things, but that's what should have occurred. But given the two choices that we have available to us, I am going to vote for the motion, although I'm not tickled about it. Go on.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. And I do apologize about the error in taking up all the...
Unfinished business, Lynn Ashack, and that we do have a public hearing, the ordinance replacement ordinance, 2010 OR 40, and this was passed at our first reading.
It was publicly noticed out there, and I was in the Friday's paper that we had a public hearing tonight, so if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. But given the audience, I don't know if there's anybody here that could be...
Well, I'll go ahead and officially open up public hearing. We can get that up. Okay, I'm officially open up public hearing. Is there anybody wish to speak on this matter? Please come to the podium, state your name and your address. Seeing none, officially closed public hearing. Does eight council have any questions? Nothing has changed, everything is the same?
Same as it was last meeting.
Are we, are we passing on the second and third, or just the second? Do you need more time?
Second and third would be great with me, so I can get up to EPA.
I would recognize that. Okay, I'll make a motion to pass on the second and third reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2017 OR 31 in the second and third reading. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, it's okay, they're going to, yeah, they're signed.
Heather, we have 2017 OR 32. It's an order, an ordinance of additional appropriation that was passed in first and second. Any changes?
No changes.
Okay. So I want to officially open up public hearing in this matter. Is anybody wish to speak? Seeing none, I'm officially closed public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2017 OR 32 in the third and final. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, which is Mr. Merkley. This is a public hearing tonight. It is an ordinance changing the zoning map destination of certain tract of property located at 414 East Court Avenue.
This matter comes...
M1 to DC.
This matter comes to you from the Planning Commission with a favorable recommendation. It's in reference to property at 414 East Court Avenue. The petitioner has requested that that property be rezoned from M1, which is multifamily, to downtown commercial. The petitioner, Ben Van Goo, is...
No.
No?
No. He is here.
He is not here.
And this is coming to us with a favorable recommendation?
Yes, favorable recommendation.
Okay.
And Mr. Pruts is here, if you have any specific questions, but...
At this time, I'm...
Glad there were no object, I don't believe there were any objections or any concerns at the planning.
I'm going to get the formality out of the way and officially open up public hearing. Is there anybody wish to speak on this rezone?
Pretty much everything that's around this property on Court Avenue is already downtown commercial.
At the meeting itself, nobody spoke against it. Couple people spoke for it, and basically the same thing was said, everything nearby is the same, same as downtown commercial, so it just makes sense to go downtown commercial. That's why it was a favorable recommendation.
I'll officially close public hearing then.
Motion to approve.
Come on, you've got to sign a number. 32.
Number 32.
No, that would be 33.
33. Do I hear four?
I'm sorry, just...
We, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2017 OR 33. Any discussions?
Just a question. Was there any comment about how we, we're in desperate need of housing, single-family housing, and here's another chance, we were taking single family and moving it to commercial?
This, this building, this building's probably no, no bigger than a shotgun house, so...
I'm in the shotgun house.
Yeah. No, I don't, I don't think this was just...
So it wasn't a family, wasn't living...
This is, by staying, this is property that's relocated next to Gary Miller's office, I believe. I thought.
That's what I was thinking.
Jim Lang's old rental property. We used to call it Jim Lang condo. Yes, yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
I'm trying to encourage single family to be among other single family, as opposed to, when you're in the middle of a bunch of businesses, then I think that's a thought pattern behind that.
Now we, Smirgle again, and it's changing the zoning map for 1408 Charlestown New Albany Pike from Industrial 2 to C2.
The next three items concern the same property at 1408 Charlestown New Albany Pike. This is across from Southeast Christian Church. There is a strip center called the East Center. It has been there for as long as I can remember. On our zoning map, it is zoned in industry, Industrial 2. Obviously, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. The request is, again, with favorable recommendations from Planning Commission, to zone this property or three separate contract, that's tracks, but it is 1408, 1410, and 1412 Charlestown New Albany Pike from I2 to C2. There are three separate tracks, three separate addresses, so you're going to require three separate ordinances, but I believe if you so choose, you can consolidate those into one public hearing.
Okay, I so choose. I'm going to officially open up the public hearing for the property located at 1408, 1410, and 1412 Charlestown New Albany Pike. Is there anybody here wish to speak in this matter? Seeing none, I'm officially closed public hearing.
Make a motion to approve 2017 OR 34.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2017 OR 34. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All those opposed, motion carries. About 2017 OR 35, a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. 2017 OR 36.
Still moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. And now we are at where the approval, the resolution of the Jeffersonville Common Council regard approval of the expansion of the economic development area, and I'm assuming this was already passed, but it was passed a little out of order, nothing has changed.
Yeah, I, I can explain real quick. This is coming to you from our bond council. We have closed on the 10th Street bond, the 10th Street widening project on both ends. We've closed on that during the preparation of the documents for the bond closing. It was brought to our attention that a resolution that should have been adopted by the council was not. However, I disagree it was adopted, but we're going to do it again. Just, you're adopting a identical resolution that you adopted from May of last year. I'll hand this out to you. Sure you can. That's what we are doing. Nothing is changing. We are just expanding the inner-city road tip. We have these parcels. Again, we've already done this.
Do we assign the same number? Do we need to sign a different number?
No, we're going to do a new resolution to make everybody happy up north. I'm going to give you one.
Do you want me to attach this?
Yes.
Yes.
I would, I would like you to, please. Thank you.
Can I ask why they, did it get occurred?
Do you have a new resolution number, please?
Can you tell me why they think it did not occur properly or didn't occur?
They, they, we passed it too early. It should have been passed after redevelopment had their public hearing, so we jumped the gun a little bit. Take your ears off.
I got it. It's okay, I got it.
Motion to approve Resolution Six.
Second. Well, it's a new resolution.
You're going to be, there's going to be a new resolution.
It's still a new number. It's still, ironically, it's still six.
Oh, okay.
Ha ha.
Got it this time.
It's little things that you got to...
So I got a, a motion.
When I scan this in, I will, excuse me, I will also attach this one to it.
This is what redevelopment...
We go for a third, six, six, six?
It's identical.
It's okay.
Yes.
Got one of the others.
Motion stands.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, couple of comments.
When I look at this, I don't see that there's any attachment, though.
That's, I just handed the clerk that.
And it's identical to the other?
It is, it's identical.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Merkley, does the agreement with...
Still in place.
Is that a part of that?
It's, it's a separate interlocal agreement we have with the schools that has, I mean, it's, they're sort of tied together, but the agreement to give them the 10 percent...
The important part of the agreement is out of the redevelopment commission.
Yes, yes, and council approved that as well. That agreement's still, is still in effect.
All right.
Okay, we are moving on. Mr. Merkley, it's an ordinance of the State of Jefferson authorized an issuance of Capital Belt Tourism Fund Revenue Bond Series 2017.
It's my understanding that the tourism board is issuing a bond of a million dollars that will be earmarked toward the City of Jeffersonville Public Art District, Arts and Cultural District. They are issuing the bond, now, as my understanding is that the city will be the pass-through on the money and will pay the claims in the bills, but Tom Pittman, I believe, is here, who's bond counsel for the tourism.
Am I correct?
Yes. Do you have any specific questions? He's here to answer those, but that's my understanding of what we are doing, is resolutions to authorize those, the tourism board to go through with those. Bonds to be issued, we would be set up through, our finance department would process the claims, and you all would approve those.
There's no exhibit A.
Exhibit A, I did not...
Which is the description of the project.
Yes, it's the same resolution that you, again, I did not prepare this resolution, but the resolution that you all adopted, it was either earlier this year or last year, that, that, that...
I don't know. It's all they gave.
Yes. It's a resolution that designates the cultural arts district as the project that will be funded.
So that would be 2017 OR one. Hi, does this go in one reading or three?
It's be one.
Do you want me to...
No, no, sorry, sorry.
Divide it with seven.
Yes. So it is an ordinance, so you can just pass it on first reading tonight, and we can come back with the exhibit.
I will, I will put the, I'll, I'll make sure you all get the exhibit. I'll email it out to you two.
Motion approved 2017 OR 37 on the first reading.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to pass 2017 OR 37 on the first reading. Is there any other further discussion?
Yes, ma'am. So does this, is this bond going to take care of what was presented to redevelopment at our last meeting?
That's my, well, first my memory, make sure we're speaking about the same thing that was presented.
It was, it was just basically, you know, she, the arts administrator went through kind of the layout of the arts district, and we talked specifically about the fire museum lot and how we wanted to break up that parking lot a little bit and talk about...
I, I don't think this is...
Yeah, I don't...
My understanding was redevelopment commit, what I was told, redevelopment committed to pay for that lot, and this is, everything helps around, around that.
I think, I think Nathan's correct. I think that's...
I just want to make sure I'm on the right track.
Because the exhibit, which I, Vicki will get to you, outlines what the project is, which you all adopted several months ago.
Mr. Merkley, if you'd be so gracious as to explain to the council who, who and how the bond is being paid, and what, if any, may occur because...
Liability.
Tourism is going to be paying the bond, correct?
Yes, correct.
And they're obligated.
Taxes on the...
They're obligated, yes. No, no city funds are going to repay the bond.
We've been through this before.
Since we're still in the discussion, there's not a description. I guess, are we going to get a description by the next...
I'll have it free at the next one. I did not prepare this resolution, so I will, but I will make sure that...
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
I will get that to you all first thing in the morning, and I'll make sure it's attached to here.
Thank you.
With that being said, and will be reflected in the minutes, that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
You can finally leave, Nellis.
Okay, you get it, you get a little break. We're now back to Lynn Ashack, and it's an ordinance concerning the refunding by the State of Jefferson of all portions of its sewage work refunding revenue bonds of 2009 and its sewage works revenue bonds of 2010 Series B.
Ma'am? The sewer board was presented with a resolution at the meeting on July the 6th, and they adopted Resolution 2017-1, which is asking the sewer, the city council to adopt the ordinance refunding the two bonds, the 2009 bond and the 2010, AKA Build America bonds. The reason we're doing that is to try to, to save in excess of $500,000 over the term of the bonds. So I've got the great consultant from OW Crone and the attorney from Barnes &amp; Thornburg who prepared the ordinance, and he prepared the financial report, so it's a complicated bond because the Build America bonds were a complicated bond to begin.
I would, I'll just say a few words. Yes, this is sort of high-tech refinancing, if you will. It's, it's a, it's a complicated structure called a crossover advance refunding, which is done when, when an opportunity is identified, as it was here. The, the main point, obviously, is to, to generate, you know, freed-up money for you guys, and don't want to go into all the details, because you don't really need to know much more than that, at the end of the day, you're going to reduce your debt service by several hundred thousand dollars.
Is the term of the bond different?
No, it's, it's, it doesn't go past the current term.
So the expiration of the bond today is going to be the same that it is tomorrow after we pass this?
Yes, it will be, except that annual payments will be lower.
I said in that meeting, but I want to put on the record, we already put on that the bond's still the same, but with doing this, we are reducing our interest rate, and we are also saving, savings approximately $500,000 in doing this, correct?
At least, yeah.
Yeah, that's a conservative number. Hopefully, it'll be... I can speak a little bit to the numbers. In today's current market, we had the underwriter go out and do a run based on, you know, the security and Jeffersonville's credit, and, and he came back, the, the numbers I have today are $700,000 in gross savings. So what that means is you'll essentially pay $700,000 less payments on the new bonds than you would have on the old bonds. It's kind of just a black and white. Another measure is, is a present value, so to kind of make it apples to apples, you would present a present value savings figure, which is about $560,000. So that's in today's dollars.
When do these expire?
Three years.
January 2031 would be when they find them.
And total amount refinancing, what's the base on it?
It is the total amount, it's, it's about $13 million. Thank you.
Cost, Ed, which is my question. They budgeted $200,000 cost for attorney fees, his fee, I guess, asking a good question, passing Mr. Orame on the answer. Your former attorney took help each for bond work. He put it at...
Why are we talking about this? Why are we talking about this?
The cost. Like, because I think that's, because Mr. Stein has asked that question before.
No, I was asking what the face amount was, but since you brought it up, I'd like to go ahead and finish your thought there. So, so any, any figure?
I'm patient, bring up those issues, and Ms. Gill asked that as well, which is why I apologize if you weren't a part of that.
I didn't hear her ask that, Mr. Wilder.
She asked it before the meeting, her parent meeting, so I can have that question answered, which I like to be prepared.
Just...
She didn't ask it during this discussion.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
Would you like to move me to ask?
Excuse me. Mr. Wilder. Go ahead. I guess what, I'm not sure what question. Do you want me to address this question?
I would like Mr. Wilder to finish. He's my attorney, and I asked it beforehand, and I'm asking again, so, please.
Okay, so, yes, in the current numbers, the, the current budget is 210, 210,000 exactly. Any figures you guys will see or hear, already factor that in. So, we were talking, I was talking to Lynn, you know, you always try and, we, we come out with conservative numbers on the, on the pricing side, so we, we hope that we can do better on, on the interest rate, and then we also budget high on the issuance side and hope to lower those, and we kind of true it up because most of us are paid by hourly, and this is, as Tom alluded to in the beginning, this is quite a complex deal with those Build America bonds, and so it's, it's taking some time to get here and...
And, and I would also say, it's, it's the sort of transaction where a boatload of work has to be done upfront before you even really know that you've got a deal, and then if the market turns, God forbid, you don't get billed. So the, the professionals on this type of financing work at risk with a lot of, of upfront costs. I think that, that our firm will present an hourly bill without any premium, but, but because of the volume of the work, this is about as expensive a type of financing as is done these days.
Yeah, and same. We'll provide detailed...
Yeah, this is market rate on this type of financing.
Conservatively, you said we'll save $500,000, but it may be up to 700. So, current market conditions, if the rates increase tomorrow, that's going to eat away at the savings, but the best we can do is right now is kind of come up with a conservative interest rates, and it was, it was 696,000, I think was the run, so 700,000.
Well, I appreciate you explaining that, because the public, this sewer rates, as Lynn will tell you, it's a hot topic, and for the average person, of course, we don't have media here, but if they want to, everything's reflected in the minutes for their understanding as I want them to, you know, bonds are complicated.
Right, and so in theory, we're reducing the costs, the wastewater to allow Lynn to do more projects, cover increased O and M costs without raising rates. I'm not saying they're never going to raise rates or anything like that, but that's essentially kind of the point of doing a refunding.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I have a question, and my question is, what will this do for the average client of the Jeffersonville Sewer Department?
It'll keep your, it'll keep future rate increases from being higher, correct?
I don't think I could stand the nuggles.
Well, this is a good way then to avoid it.
Yeah.
And so these are ending in 2031, and there's 700,000 potentially to be encompassed worth $50,000 a year. I know it isn't going to be an even amount, because things are going to, the balances move, but if, and...
Well, actually, the way the deal's structured, without getting too much into the crossover, you start actually recognizing savings in 2020 at the call date, and, and based on the numbers I've given you, it's, it's about $60,000 a year from 2020 to 2031 over, it's, it's, you know, within a thousand-dollar variance.
And the good thing, too, about having, when you, when you have the refunding, you're, you're not required to have a formal public bidding, which means that you'll have an underwriter out there who will be watching the market daily, and if, if, you know, tomorrow's a bad day, they're, they're not going to sell tomorrow, they're going to wait for a window, and then they're going to pull the trigger, trigger real fast on, on what they hope is, is a, is a kind of a dip, dip day, right?
And sir, I think you said something, and it's before we went off on the tangent, about this was, we were able to find these reduced rates because of our bond rating?
Well, because of the, because interest rates now are lower than they were when you did the financing. They've just evolved in a way that they're, they're enough lower that if you refinance, just the math of it creates a much lower annual payment.
But that, did you say something about because of our, because of the city's bond rating, we were able to...
It's not because...
I don't know that it's, it's specifically, unless you had a recent rating increase, which I guess I, I don't know that.
But probably not rate...
Not, it's not directly related to that.
Agency, rather than so much as rate.
Of course, as your rating goes up, you will be able to recognize opportunities like this and increase that savings, and one, yeah. And another point, we wanted to make sure, one of the reasons for doing this refunding, obviously, is to save, save money. The other is to eliminate those risk, those debt service reserve covenants, and so what we're going to do with, with this deal is currently you have $7.1 million in an account that you can't do anything with. It's there as a security to the bondholders, called your debt service reserve. What we've done is we've worked with SRF, who holds like six of the eight bonds, the majority of, of your outstanding bonds in your wastewater utility, and we've talked to them, and, and in this ordinance, Tom has created a bifurcated debt service reserve, and so what we're going to do is, we're going to have one reserve in which the SRF bonds are secured with a cash-funded debt service reserve, and after all, if we go forward with this deal and do it, that, that amount is going to be 6.7 million, but we've talked But we've talked to the director at IFA, and he's agreed the next time you guys go up for SRF money to re-amortize one of the principal payments and thus reduce that requirement down to 5.3. So effectively, what I'm getting at is that we're going to be able to reduce the debt service reserve requirement for, in the future bonds, and not have to use funds from the utility to fund that up to get it. So we're almost pre-funding a reserve. Therefore, that will leave more cash and funds available for pay-go projects, O and M increases, and effectively help to mitigate some of those rate increases that you were talking about.
Are we just like decreasing the percentage that we have to match for the bond?
Well, you're, what you're doing is that right now you are required to park a lot of money just in a fund that just sits there, that it'd be nice to be able to access. Part, one aspect of this refunding is that the amount that you're required to just park there doing nothing, which is several hundred thousand dollars, is being brought down. So it kind of frees up your cash flow. If I could mention, another feature of this type of refunding is that the so-called, the 2010B Build America bond is a bond where the government agreed to pay a certain amount of the interest. They agreed to pay like 35% of the interest. The problem is, they're free to change their mind anytime they want to. In fact, they did change their mind a couple of years ago, and they said, yeah, guys, we think we'll pay 32% instead of 35%. By refunding, you're also reducing your exposure that the government might decide they want to pay even less of your debt service. So, right?
It's going to be a benefit, and it's not going to cause a rate increase.
Yeah.
So whatever we do is not going to end up with a rate increase.
Yeah.
Needs to be additional improvements without, yeah. All right. Well, I'll make a motion to approve 2017 OR 38 on the first and second.
Second.
Got a motion to pass, motion of second to pass 2017 OR 38 in the first and second. Any further discussion?
I would just add that something, this is pretty significant, you know, to vote on. And it's pretty lengthy, and as the professionals either themselves said, it's very technical. And I would like to have this information or discussion about this information earlier and for future, just so I can make sure I got all my questions formulated and all. That's my only comment.
You don't have to address me, Mr. Wilder.
I don't have to.
So you don't include me in your comments. If you're responding to Mr. Samuel, then respond and put me in that.
Call the question.
I'm not going to tolerate it.
Call the question.
Okay. All those that favor, same five are saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Merkley, we've got an ordinance submitting the City of Jeffersonville 2035 Comprehensive Plan to Incorporate the Spring Street Master Plan as a Component of the Plan.
Plans three times. This is an ordinance, again, comes to you from the Planning Commission. It's a favorable recommendation. We are asking that we amend our existing comprehensive plan to include a new Spring Street master plan. I believe Mr. Pruitt is here, and he has a presentation, which will go in more detail than I can. And this would require, and this would require a public hearing at some point.
Not tonight, correct?
This one requires one reason.
No, we don't need a public hearing tonight, though, correct?
Yes. It's notice. There was another question you had.
But you said no.
It was a notice. I'll let you in.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Pruitt. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. For anybody in the room who doesn't know who I am, I'm Nathan Pruitt, Planning Director for the City of Jeff. And pretty excited to bring to you all the first in-house long-range plan that the city has completed. It's a pretty massive undertaking to do an in-house plan. In large part, this was able to happen because, as you remember, when I came on board about a year and a half ago, we changed one of the positions in my department to long-range planner. And as a result of that, I now have somebody on staff who's able to create visionary documents for us that understands transit planning and streetscapes and land use in a way that we can actually provide these things and not actually have to go out and see contracts to do this. So it's given us some amazing capabilities, so I just wanted to re-reference that, and I'm glad we were able to make that change last year. So this is a byproduct of that. So the Spring Street master plan is basically a retrofit slash overhaul for the streetscape between Eastern Boulevard and Riverside Drive. So that's coming all the way from the river, where the river stage is, and the overlook all the way up into Clayesburg and Eastern Boulevard. So it's a pretty large corridor. And there's four sections within that that we've broken this project area down into because each section has its own issues, constraints, challenges that we're facing, and some areas are better than others. So we decided to compartmentalize it. If you start, obviously downtown, up to basically Court Avenue, you have the downtown section. So that's where all of our outdoor dining is. That's where all the great improvements that were made 25 years ago roughly are kind of starting to feel a little bit tired. Some of those brick pavers have kind of lost their color, and the tree wells, they weren't appropriately sized at the beginning. So there's some issues there we're looking at. And then in the Arts and Cultural District, just north of Court, that's obviously burgeoning. You heard about that tonight. Amazing opportunity for the city to get a bond to really improve a new district that's going to be one of very few that we have in the state. It's going to be a huge draw for locals as well as tourists to come in and check out Jeff, see what we have to offer in downtown. And so that section is very industrial. You've probably been through it many, many times, and it's a lot of asphalt. There's not a lot of green. There's no trees. Pedestrian experience is quite atrocious. It's not very safe either. And the M-Fine development, which is going to be hopefully opening this fall or maybe next spring, is going to bring in some seniors that we really need to make sure we take care of and get them downtown safely. And then north of that is the hospital section, and of course, we have our anchor institution there and some adjacent uses. But that area needs a little bit of help and some reconfiguration. And then Clayesburg, we've had some pretty severe and distinct dilapidation in public infrastructure along that roadway. And that area is probably going to see the most change from this plan. A lot of the things that we're proposing are actually taking those great elements we have south of Court and bringing them north of Court. So the pedestrian scale lighting, the trees, sidewalk improvements, things like that. And you can see some example images there. I'm just going to take a moment to point to this. I hope you all, I think you all have the copy in front of you. This is a bound copy. This is the final version of master plan. If you look in the very back, there is public comment during the public comment period. We had this out as a draft for a while, and you can see comments we got from that, as well as all the additional public comment from our public open house. We also did stakeholder interviews. All those comments are located in the back there. So we had a lot of great stakeholder interaction and public comment. So I just want to make sure you all take a look at that. And you've got a nice bound copy to take home and read more and peruse and help us implement. So in general, the vision of the plan is obviously to unify the streetscape. I've already kind of mentioned that, bringing south of Court, north of Court. And we want to do this because obviously places that have a greater sense of place are places that people want to be in. They want to experience it. They want to linger longer. They want to shop more. They want to dine more. They want to be there with their friends. They want to, they want to be in those places. So when you do that, encourage, it will encourage redevelopment. So properties that are not seeing utilization will start to see that. Obviously, Spring Street has been highly occupied. The occupancy rate is very high for the first time in many, many years, and that's due to a lot of factors, but it's a resurgence and a reinvestment in downtown. So we want to do that throughout the entire corridor. And what we realized is that there were lots of little projects happening. So the M-Fine, not little, actually, a very large project. So the M-Fine was occurring. Arts District started taking off. We realized that the Bike and Ped Master Plan needed some implementation as well that we did in 2013. Then we were talking about the outdoor seating program in downtown and how we should improve that. So you've got all these factors going on, as well as the TARC grant that we received to implement better TARC service and station service in Clayesburg. So all these things were happening at the same time, and we thought, wouldn't it be great if we actually consolidate all this into one master document that will really help us push for a consistent, beautiful showcase and a gateway to basically downtown through Clayesburg? So you can see the specific goals. We came up with eight goals for this plan. Obviously, bicycle facilities are important as well as transit. We want to make sure everybody can get where they need to go to safely, no matter their mode of transit, so increasing safety for all users. We definitely want to see properties turn to active, you know, business-centric properties and be utilized. So revitalization's a key there. Pedestrian comfort and walkability, I've already talked, there's some real issues with that, limited access or industrial nature. We also want to make sure the street functions well. There's some areas where we can actually improve car user ship, the experience there by putting in some turn lanes and with the existing right-of-way. That's the greatest thing. There's no actual road paving that has to be done. It's just repaint, restriping lanes correctly and not having them oversized like an interstate. And the last thing, of course, is formalizing the outdoor seating program. And from there, so we went through this process, a normal planning process that you hear from me often, where you collect data. So we went out on the sites. We walked the corridor. We took photographs. We started writing notes and documenting all the issues, challenges, problems, what we'd like to see there. Then we started bringing in stakeholder interviews. So we talked to our anchor institutions, neighborhood associations, the Downtown Merchants Association, and many, many others to see, okay, what's working and what's not working, and what would you like to see? Those were our basic questions. We had more than that. But from there, we actually started drafting some of our ideas. We put it out to a public meeting. We got a lot of comments. I think we probably had between 40 and 60 people there that evening. So we got a really good amount of feedback on that. We put that draft document together. We sent it out. It's been out in the public realm for probably two, a good two weeks for review before Plan Commission heard it that evening and gave a favorable recommendation. And so where we are tonight is, I'd like to make this a formal part of the comprehensive plan, which is our long-range city plan, but this is specific to one section of the city. And I want to incorporate it into that so as we see new development, it is something that the city has formally said that this is very important, and we can help developers help us meet that goal somewhat, if that were to happen in a rapid rate before we get to a point where we're actually doing the improvements ourself. So that's why I'm here tonight. In general, there's just a few quick things overall in the entire plan that are consistent, that are kind of being done, that are big changes. Maintenance and minor improvements in downtown, actually, these are segments, but these are the big ones in each section. So maintenance and minor improvements in downtown, there's not a whole lot of change there. But we'd like to do some significant streetscape improvements in the Arts and Cultural District as well as Clayesburg because those are the issues that have had, or those are the areas that have had the most issues that haven't been addressed. And bicycle lanes, we're looking at obviously implementing those. We have some sharrows in the city, and we do have bike lanes in numerous places, so we need to start connecting that network. Eighth Street to Eastern Boulevard on spring has plenty of right-of-way to do that as we readjust those striping patterns, and that was recommended in the 2013 plan. And creation of a center left turn lane from 9th to 14th, that is something that we are also proposing, which will help with traffic flow as you try to make those lefts. It's being implemented on 10th Street as well. So just wanted to highlight some of those big changes there. And then I'm just going to run through a few quick example images. So the things on the left are usually things that are existing today, and the things on the right are example photos of things we'd like to start moving towards in the future. So right now, on the left, we have undersized tree wells as a result of that improper install. Obviously, we're getting sidewalk buckling. Those concrete pavers are dyed. That's actually not a brick itself. It's not an integral color. So we'd like to replace those with an actual brick product so that 100 years from now, it's still red, and it looks amazing. And you can see that on the right. So we'd like to enhance the tree wells, sidewalk features as well. Intersection improvement. So Court Avenue is going to get a pretty expansive intersection improvement at spring. We're about to start a temporary installation to start doing a quick deployment to see how the intersection functions and operates with pavement markings. So we're going to do just paint on the ground to see how it feels, how it looks. The city engineer and I have come up with that plan, and you're going to see a little bit of this implemented fairly soon. But the hard changes, the ones that cost a lot and take time to install, of course, will have to come later. But we'll get a quick win with getting some of those in to see how it functions. So you can see on the left there today how it currently is oriented. We've got many travel lanes. We've got four travel lanes plus parallel parking. That's very hard for a pedestrian to navigate with signal timings. There's no pedestrian refuge, and the length of crossing is very, very long. And the funny, the interesting thing about this is, if you look down there, when you're down there, there's actually yellow paint on the curb on the side near every edge of this intersection. And what that means is you can't park there. So if you can't park there, why is the sidewalk not further out into that intersection if it can be utilized? That's our question we always ask. So we're bringing those curbs out to allow people quicker crosses, which is less vulnerability, less opportunity for any bad things to happen in an intersection with a pedestrian and a car. So as M-Fine obviously brings in all those seniors, and they're going to be walking south to get candies at Shemp's, we want to make sure they can do that safely and without trouble. So that's going to be a big improvement. The other things that we're looking at is improvements to things like 14th Street and Wall. We've got some slip lanes on the right there that don't really make sense to have because if you were going to go that direction, you would have actually already turned right at this previous streets. And actually, that road curves around and goes south. So why would you come back south the same way you just came? So again, these are missed opportunities, things that may functioned at one time, but now don't really function as well. So we've got opportunities to put things in like expansive, beautiful, actually, half-knee walls with brick and bus shelter stations that actually improve the look and aesthetic of the corridor. We can get those bike repair stations in and public art, all those things that make a corridor pleasant to be in and walk through. So there's some improvements there. So here's what we're dealing with in Clayesburg. Unfortunately, like I said before, we've had some massive deterioration. There's a lack of curb. The striping width is incorrect on this neighborhood and local streets, so you have extra-wide pavements, pavement space. So what that does is it encourages fast car travel. And when that happens, you have people who don't want to get hit, so they park on the sidewalk because the speeds are too high, but it's a neighborhood street. So they actually drive their car on the sidewalk, and then you start getting deterioration. Some of this, of course, is an underutilized lot on the right, but the sidewalk width is also constrained. It's not wide enough to our city standard as we need it to be today. And you can see some breaking up there. So this is kind of the condition in Clayesburg we're dealing with. It's, it needs a complete retrofit there, reestablishing the curb as well. So here you can see the curb has completely deteriorated. This is looking south. The next intersection there is the 10th Street off-ramp. And again, we have no tree cover, so pedestrian environment is not friendly here. The sidewalks have degraded as well, and we need to reformalize that curb. So there's a quick image of what that could look like. And again, TARC stops, little grass patch. We don't want that. We want a better experience for our TARC users and our bus users. So we're going to make upgrades. We've already done that in certain locations. Just south of that example image you see on the left is Court and Spring, and we have a bench there. We have trash cans and public art as well. So again, the TARC grant is going to take care of some of those stations, but not all of them. So we'd like to upgrade all of them and make them more user-friendly and make the experience of being out there in the cold or the rain a little less onerous when you're using the bus in the winter or the rain. So we really need to improve that. So that's a quick overview. I didn't go through every single piece of this plan, obviously, because it's rather quite large. One thing I do want to draw your attention to, and I think you've already figured it out, is there's these cool pullouts. So you can kind of see these maps here, which details all the existing conditions, all the improvements that we're looking to make. It's a pretty amazing plan, incorporates a lot of the concepts that we've been advocating for in downtown. And again, I want to give a shout out to Chad Reichel, who is our long-range planner. All the drawings are his. Obviously, we worked, worked through these comments that we received in the public, worked through, obviously, planning concepts. And under my direction, we developed all these concepts, but his hand and his writing skills made this happen. So I just want to give kudos to him on that. So the plan is going to basically put forth, it does have an action plan in the back for implementation, and it breaks things down in cost, not in, not in true dollars, but in kind of a Yelp rating, one, two, three stars, for what that could look like as far as implementation. It's a four-phase approach, although it may turn out to be different, you know, if funding actually happens. And that's the one thing I do want to say is that actual timeframe and scope of work will be dictated by funding. This is our, this is our best aspiration for what the corridor can be, but of course, it's dictated by funding. And one thing I do want to talk about, because it was brought up before, and I think it's maybe on the agenda tonight as well, is that there's a section of Spring Street that hasn't been accommodated with sidewalk access, and that's going to be from Eastern all the way up to Dutch Lane. And I just want to point out on page 23, if you see beyond Clayesburg, we have a section in there that says Spring Street north of Eastern Boulevard, and it talks about the fact that we do have to make that connection. So that connection can be part of this project, and we can incorporate that as well. So I don't want to be, it would be remiss of me not to say that as well. You know, we looked at neighborhood connections throughout and pulling things in from other areas. So I just want to give you a quick next steps of where we're at and where we're going. Hopefully, tonight, we get approval of this plan to amend the comp plan. And we've already kind of started some preliminary engineers reporting on this through the urban enterprise zone. They find this as a reinvestment and economic development tool, which is part of their mission. So they actually entered to a contract about a week ago to do an engineers' report, which will give us hard construction dollars and feasibility for the project. So in about 30 days, I'm actually going to know how much this project is going to cost. So I'm super excited about that. It's a pretty quick pace here. So of course, following from that, we're going to have some quick wins, like the TARC-funded work that's happening in Clayesburg. So I'm super excited about that. It's a pretty quick pace here. So of course, following from that, we're going to have some quick wins, like the Tark-funded work that's happening in Clayesburg. So we've got about a $250,000 grant that's going to improve some Tark stops. So we'll be meeting with their engineers soon, in a few months, to talk about details on that. Funding won't come up for another year because federal grants take a while to implement, and transit especially. And so after we get those engineers' report numbers back, obviously, we would like to move into design development and construction. And so that's going to be another cost that's going to have to be undertaken. We're going to, at the same time, we're going to be having, hopefully, funding discussions. Where does that money come from? And then, of course, once all those things are hammered out, then we have implementation. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on what that looked like as far as timeline and where we're at. But if you have any questions specific on this plan, definitely let me know. I didn't hear from anybody, so I'm hoping everybody was just blown away and is very happy and is excited about it.
I have a question.
Definitely shoot if you have any.
You could have gone through page by page. We gave you an hour and a half.
Right, right. That makes sense. I could do that.
No, I was looking at the implementation matrix, and you list champion/lead, you know, planning department redevelopment. I think I saw the hospital in here somewhere.
Yes.
I didn't see UEZ. I may have overlooked it. But there, I would imagine that the enterprise zone is going to be actively involved through this process?
I think there are several pages of it, and I think UEZ is...
I was just looking at the matrix.
We have $300,000 right now allocated for this project. We use 35 of that to do the...
Yeah, sure. Sorry.
Yeah, so the UEZ is actually very committed to this project. They've earmarked $300,000 for implementation of the plan. Obviously, that's not going to fund everything we have in this plan. A big chunk of that, probably $150,000, will be technical things. That's going to be the engineers' report, and following that, design development and construction drawings. So they're committed to making this a reality. They're not going to be able to fund the development of, the actual construction of the entire quarter, but they're going to have a hand in that.
And it's more than like we haven't formulated a budget yet. We're actually going to have discussions next couple of weeks about how much we're going to commit for next year.
Good. I think you've been kind of bringing that up in several meetings. This is the direction?
Right.
Kudos, 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 kudos to both you and Chad. When we first got this from the planning zoning went through, and I was like, wow, Dustin, this is exciting for your district. But then I got to thinking, it's exciting for all of us because it's all of our downtown. And I really like all the elements that you incorporated, bringing up the infrastructure, addressing the traffic, the flow of the intersections. But I mean, everything has been addressed, so...
It'll help with stormwater, too, actually, with all the new trees.
This is exciting, and I really like the connectivity because for so long, our downtown seemed to stop at a certain point, and you had that whole area there that they just felt like they were forgotten.
Right.
So I'm glad they are no longer forgotten.
We also have a front porch and a storefront project program. So we're going to try to, as we're doing these improvements on the streets, we can improve the aesthetics of the homes and the businesses along the way.
Oh, good.
UEZ is committed to basically an incentive package to help develop businesses in Clayesburg and underserved areas that have typically been only targeted for downtown and south of Court. So again, we're trying to connect the Court and distribute the benefit evenly, as much as we can.
Just one comment. I'd give you appreciation for that. I express appreciation to you for that. I like the vision, the thinking. There's a number of plantings, landscaping's in this. And I see we have Paul Northam and Bill Burns back there that are with our parks. Is the expectation that our Green Team would be responsible for these, or are there... Have we had that...
It'll be a smattering. It'll be a smattering of individuals. So if you think about our probably, I'm not sure how many urban city blocks we have at this point. I should probably do a quick study on that. But we've been working on the tree walk, and the UEZ has. You've probably seen some postings and some news coverage. And when we plant those trees, we often get that question of who's going to maintain the tree. Well, technically, it's in City right-of-way, and that strip of grass is also City right-of-way. But if you notice, all the homeowners mow that strip of grass in front of their home. It's expected that they do that. Obviously, the city doesn't do that. So in some cases, I think a local business would probably mow that strip out front. If there's landscaping going in at like an intersection, you know, I could foresee it being a partnership between Green Team or City Pride. There's probably not going to be a ton of maintenance. Things, the way we like to design things is maintenance-free. So we're hoping there won't be a lot of landscape long-term maintenance. And it's very limited. Other than trees, there's not a lot of bulk landscaped environments. It's more grass and a tree with a few landscape things.
Any other questions, counsel, before opening up public hearing?
At the end, they mentioned about Eastern Boulevard and North, and that there's, you know, no sidewalks, and it could be incorporated, or it is kind of incorporated in this plan. If we were to, you know, that's been an issue that's been brought up here, and I'm planning on bringing it up again. Can, you mentioned that you're going to get some cost estimates for the whole plan. Are you planning also including the Eastern North as part of that?
So the contract...
One more thing. And from a priority standpoint, where would that be? Would that be the last thing, or would that be probably one of the first things because it doesn't even have a sidewalk?
Sure. Yeah, no, it's a good, both of those are really good questions. So the, the actual contract that the engineers' report has entered into with UEZ does not include bringing up cost estimates for Eastern to Dutch. From my understanding, that has already been ascertained roughly, close enough, I think, by the engineers' department. So that, what I'm expecting is that whatever engineers' cost estimate we get from the engineers, we just add the 120, which is what I'm understanding that it should cost, onto that to complete the project and say, this is how much the whole thing from Dutch all the way down to Riverside will cost. As far as implementation, because we've been put on notice that there is no sidewalks and there's been issues in that area, I think that should be the first thing built. Clayesburg should probably come second due to the length, the intensity of their issues in that area, and the lack of investment. Arts and Cultural District is obviously burgeoning, but not quite fully formed. So I think if we have some groundbreakings and some openings next year, or the next year, you know, as that progresses, once we get done with Clayesburg, then it makes sense to revitalize Arts and Cultural, once you've got people interchanging and experiencing that. And then I think downtown should come last. They've had a lot of construction fatigue with downtown River, the O'Hare River Bridges project, and I think they need a break. So we can do them last, and that way they have a little calm...
Starting north and then moving south.
Yeah, so it's literally a north-to-south build-out, and we could start with the connection that's not existing.
For the record, I think that some of the folks on the river end of the project would disagree and say, we're ready when you are. They have had a lot of fatigue, but I know that there are several business owners that are excited about your project. If that's the way it goes, that's the way it goes.
We'll do the best we can. Maybe we can double up the crews and start at both ends and meet in the middle. I don't know.
In the interest of safety, I would love to see them start out at the Dutch Lane project because we still have children that's walking along that area, no sidewalks for them.
I'm going to officially open, I'm officially opening up public hearing. Does anybody here wish to speak on the Spring Street project master plan? No? Okay, I'm officially, it's exciting. Officially closing public hearing. Does anybody have anything further for Nathan? I don't want to turn a motion.
One reading? Because it goes on the plan?
Yeah.
Yep.
One reading, correct class?
Thirty-nine?
Yes.
Thirty-nine?
Yes, thirty-nine.
Make a motion to approve 2017 OR 39?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, a pass 2017 OR 39. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Kim, you've been waiting back there patiently. We've got your ordinance amending the salary ordinance, fixing the salary ordinance. As a peer and a taxpayer, I applaud your energy and your passion. So thank you very much. I know how hard you guys work. Okay, before you, you have, what number is this going to be?
Forty.
Forty. Thank you. On page four, we are proposing the addition of a chaplain and community outreach liaison for the police department. It will be a part-time position, work in approximately 25 to 30 hours a week, typically 25 per week. It's a pay grade five. Chief Kavanaugh is here. If you have any questions that you want to discuss with him. Does anybody have any questions for the chief while he's here? I will add that the chief and I did meet, and we did talk extensively, and this is a position I so, so support. It's well-needed. And I'm actually, I might let you speak on the position because he does have, everything's in his budget, just for part-time.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to come forward. This position, what we're adding, is something that the police department has had over the last 25 years. The position has been filled by a volunteer at this present time in the need and with the growth of the police department and some of the experiences that we are taking on as first responders. We're finding that being able to take care of ourselves and do some things and counseling needs as first responders and dealing with some of the stressors, this would be a great tool and capacity, having the member being there on a part-time regular basis, and also the assistance that it can provide with the public. In addition to, we're also going to have this position work in a capacity with the community policing efforts, as a public liaison, communicating with the public, assisting us in any way, in form of capacity, and also other departments of the city, or you all as well, if you make any requests coming from us at the police department. We're here to work as a team effort.
Just one comment. I think a lot of departments utilize volunteer chaplains, and we have several clergy members in the, in the area that are happy to volunteer their services for this type of thing. But sometimes, and it's becoming more and more, it's occurring more and more that first responders, in my experience, are encountering calls that they're not comfortable, comfortable with dealing, you know, after the call is finished, you know, it lingers. And it's not, it's not too often that a first responder will admit that openly on the front end. And I think having somebody that we can call, that we know is dedicated to us, is on the payroll and committed, is a huge asset for our police department and, you know, everybody that works in that capacity and may need that service. Because when you're dealing with volunteer clergy that are coming in, while that is a great and appreciated service, sometimes that gets passed up because, well, I don't want to bother him. It's 11 o'clock at night, and, you know, we'll deal with this later, and then later never comes. So I think this is a bold move and a good one for the police department.
And as addition to that, if you don't mind me speaking, one of the things that the chief and I and assistant chief have talked about for the past year and a half, two years, is that this is also going to be an added kind of a clinical component, you know, with the requirements, having somebody with a counseling background as well. We're just very fortunate we have somebody that we already know who's already integrated into our workforce. But there have been issues throughout the last couple of years, as you all know, that, you know, it seems like crime gets worse. Some of the aftermath of some of the things that our officers witness, we've had to reach out and try to consult with other folks to bring them in for counseling, for debriefing. This is somebody that our officers already have a relationship with, the administration already has a relationship with, and not only has some of that pastoral experience, but also has that clinical counseling experience. So not only are there going to be group opportunities, but there's also going to be opportunities for one-on-ones if necessary.
So this resource that we're bringing in to provide to the city, it's something that we've already had for over the last 25 years. We're basically bringing this in and making it more official, and we're going to have someone that is actually on the payroll with a job description. We've worked on the job description for approximately the last three months, and I applaud the HR department. We've gotten that to where we need for the skill sets and components that we're going to need to have for the agency and for the city of Jeffersonville. Lastly, the thing that's significant to you as most, this is within the means of our budget. We have the room and the opportunity to be able to take care of this without any additional appropriations.
Where's the job description? Is that something that we'll get a chance to see?
I can send it to you, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Let's see that.
Okay. Any other questions for the chief while we're on this position?
Not for the chief. I mean, I'm supportive of this. But I did have other questions.
Real quick, while we're still on this subject, Larry, I got a question for you. The chief called me this afternoon, and he would like to get this position hired by the 16th. He suggests that maybe waive the rules, but I have said that, because salary ordinance always takes two meetings.
Correct.
If the council is in full agreement that this position, you know, can we just give him the go-ahead to get the process started before this is officially voted on, or should we waive the rules for just that position? I didn't want to get it confusing, but I do want him to be able to move forward.
Separate from everything else that's in the ordinance, you want to be able to, essentially, do something different for this?
And I don't know how to handle that. I'm asking...
I think you're suggesting passing it on all three readings tonight.
All three readings possibly be completed tonight till you start to proceed forward with action of the position.
Well, we've, yeah, we've got more to discuss, but just in case of moving forward, if these other positions are fine, then we can pass the whole thing on three readings. But my question, just be prepared, if there might be... I don't like rushing the salary ordinance because if there is any questions, but I understand the situation that he's in.
So if you want to, the entire ordinance is not going to pass on all three readings tonight. Have you motioned to separate this specific single position into different ordinance that you can pass on all three readings tonight?
Question or point of order?
Okay, go ahead.
If the money is already in the chief's budget, so there's no, there's no issue with funding of the position, and we already have the position, but it's on a volunteer, can he not just move forward with that? And then with the understanding, then it most likely, I mean, it's going to be, it sounded to me like it was going to be approved, and then we don't have to do anything on three readings. He just, he already has it in his budget, the position's in his budget, and then after our next meeting, it'll be resolved.
The next meeting is the 24th, right? So it's not like it's... He would like to, yeah.
You don't have to do the, or contingent of salary ordinance.
He's not spending the money that's not in his budget.
You're not going to try to pay somebody for...
Not until we everything officially.
Doesn't matter.
But you're saying if we don't amend the salary ordinance tonight, it's a volunteer position, and he can go ahead and pay, start paying him?
My question is, can, I don't know when the next pay period is.
The 16th. We roll into the next pay period for the city starting the 16th of this month.
So he starts, but that's when he start, he wouldn't get a check the 16th?
No, he would start officially.
And after that, we've, I don't know.
Presumably, yeah.
Approved. I don't know.
So the question is...
If we can do it without three readings?
If we could physically start in the next pay period on the 16th from tonight, and if this is going to need three readings, or potentially, could we go ahead and complete all three readings tonight?
See what else I'm asking for. If it's nothing else any different than...
Okay, well, let's finish what you're asking for.
I think we can, yeah. Let's, let's... That changed. It may help your decision. Nathan? The next request is on page six, under wastewater, and the wastewater, the board, sewer board has already approved this position, and it's a position that was an existing RFI position, the utility communications and operations coordinator position. That was held years ago, and then it was kind of archived. Mr. Heschek would like to bring that back. It's already been approved by the sewer board this week, and he can attest to that fact. The only thing that I neglected to change is when you look down under wastewater construction, construction utility worker would change from three to two to help offset the cost of paying for this position. So again, no additional request for dollars, or no really, it's kind of like trading positions, so to speak. And the sewer board, like I said, has already approved it.
The position's going to be a public relations person. It's going to do, we do a lot of, we do a lot of good things for the community that citizens don't know anything about. We want to get out there and let people know what we're doing for them and help them out if they need help. We've implemented the root control program, and we're selling whatever we, the root acts to people with their, to help with their laterals at cost. Whatever we pay for, we charge plus tax because Indiana wants its share of it. And this position's going to be responsible for the public notification program, which is a requirement of state regulation that we notify people when we have CSOs. And in the past, it's been on Facebook, it's not been on Facebook, it's on Twitter, and it's not been on Twitter, because nobody's got dedicated to take care of that program full-time.
You're trying to fit it in between what you're doing.
Right, and this is, position's going to be responsible for that program, and make sure that everybody's notified, who wants to be notified, that we have a CSO, although you're not going to see them, because there's no visible CSOs, but still, no, it's still required.
And that's important, because we're required to do that notification.
So you mentioned that we're downgrading the construction utility workers?
Yes.
Is that going to affect any?
No, I'll tell you, a few, a year or so ago, we created a collection system manager position, that's responsible for construction and collection system, and they work very well together. Between the two of them, they got 24 people working for them. So the position that we're eliminating is a position that can be eliminated. So to help with the public relations and coordinate, when we do a lot of work in closing roads for sewer repairs, like spring and court, to let people know that that's going to be closed, and get it out to our Facebook, or our Facebook page and the city's website, because we do a poor job of that. We rely on other people to do that for us. I mean, we want to be responsible for making sure that when we do work out there, people are well aware of it, so that there's no surprises.
And this person's retiring?
Yes.
This month, which is the other impetus for us to go ahead and kind of revisit this, is that he's retiring.
Will there be a need to appropriate additional dollars for this person?
Because by the time, the pay grade in the position, the person who's retiring has enough longevity to make up the difference between a pay grade three and a pay grade five. So the net difference is...
Going to balance out, but...
Is a balance out by the end of the year. And then the next year budget will include that position and eliminate the position that's currently being filled, effective until the 17th.
Okay. Just always appreciate, Lynn never brings nothing before us that's not well-needed, or so I do respect that part, but.
And then the only other changes you can see that are highlighted in yellow are changes in the contract that you all have entered into with the fire department. So when you look at those, I just reflected all the changes in the contract and tried, you know, I've looked at it three, four, five, six times, so I hope I have it all right. And I sat down with, Joe Hurt came to the office, who's the president of the union, came and sat with me and made sure that we were looking at it correctly, so hopefully between the two of us, we've not overlooked anything. But that's the only other changes when you look at the fire department. And then if you look back towards the back on page seven, their closing allowance went from 400 to 800, the fireman certification went from a maximum of four to six, the driver pay went from 20 to 30. So I just had to reflect those changes.
And also page three.
I was kind of hoping to do the fire and police at the same time, but I know the fires aren't, or the police isn't ready yet, so.
The new position in sewer, you have a job description and qualification played out for that?
Well, it's the exact same position.
I added, I changed some things that were antiquated from the old job description and included the things that we talked about.
That we wanted to add. I can get you this too after, I'll get the highlights off.
And can you also send a copy of what the pay grades are?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
That's a Kim thing.
Yep.
Okay, so everyone want a copy, or do you want me to send it to?
I'd send it to everybody, please.
Is it my understanding that if we, if everybody's on board with all these changes, then we can vote to suspend the rules, to just pass them off tonight? I move to suspend the rules and do all this at once.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second, but the motion is to suspend the rules in anticipation of the passing of 2017 OR 40.
And that has to be unanimous.
Exactly.
And you know, that's one thing that I have always pretty much been against, is suspending the rules, but in this circumstance, I would support it.
I don't understand the speed of the hurry. Maybe I'm missing something. Why do we need to suspend the rules in this case to get so many hurry?
Same to me, like chief, they want to have this guy start, and start getting paid right now, as close to right now as we can be, and if we wait with the next pay period, they can't do that.
And we have been contracting out, I don't want to say, I don't want to reveal too much, we've been contracting out from...
The other information I can share with you after the meeting, it's not of public record, but I can specifically share with you some information I received just even last week, from state retirement system in reference to an officer, so I can share that with you after the meeting.
Okay.
I don't, if I abstain, does it still pass? Does it have to be in the front?
It has to be unanimous.
You can go to the bathroom.
You can go do a coffee by yourself.
Need some coffee or anything?
Did that one time, didn't he?
No, John Perkins.
Oh, didn't?
Okay, if there, we do have a motion, a second on the floor, to suspend the rules if there's no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, then the motion carries for suspension of the rules, so I need a motion to pass on all three readings, 2017 OR 40, please.
So I move, second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Now, just a brief comment. When these things come to us, I really appreciate job descriptions and a salary range, just so we can refresh everybody's memory and my memory, I guess, and also make sure that the qualifications and job descriptions just kind of match everything. I know you're doing your job, but I just want to do my job and make sure that from a budget standpoint and from an employee standpoint, you know, everything's kosher. So I'd just be more comfortable with that.
Yeah, my apologies, I just didn't think looking at a job description would be something you'd be that interested in. I thought you, that was kind of one of those things that as long as we did our due diligence and had it, that your role was to approve the pay grade and approve the position for payment. But, yeah, I can certainly start including that whenever I submit everything to the clerk for submission, for counsel, I mean, I can certainly include that. And I will get that to Vicki, and then she can get that out to you guys, first thing tomorrow.
Okay, I guess in essence, we're creating new positions when we do this on the council, so it'd be nice to know what those positions do. I just want to make sure I understand.
Right, right. And if you would like to talk with the chief and I afterwards, we'd be more than happy to kind of enlighten you a little bit on some things that we're struggling with.
So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, chief, and thank you, Lynn. So Heather, we have an ordinance addition appropriation, and our public hearing will be July 24th.
Can we have a second on this?
Yes, we did. I think it, I think Dustin's second.
Oh, okay. I knew it was for the rules.
So it looks like first one on the screen is for the Nahand Field House. That is a reimbursement for a fee that was incorrectly charged. At the moment, there is nothing budgeted in that fund for the Nahand Field House that is all funded by donations. So I believe at the next meeting, you'll probably get just a generic kind of, let's get some appropriation in there, so if we do have any kind of bills that come in for that, then that will be addressed at the next meeting. But this $50 was a reimbursement for a fee that was charged incorrectly. And then the next one is for public arts. They received a grant for their water fountain sculpture, and this would be appropriating monies for that grant.
Motion for 2017 OR 41.
Second. How many readings?
First and second.
Second? Got a motion and a second to pass 2017 OR 41 in the first and second reading, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And Heather, it is now another additional appropriation, which the hearing, public hearing will be July 24th.
This is the one that was pulled from the last meeting, and it was for the sidewalks that Mr. Zostani was talking about.
Let me ask a question. Mr. Pruitt, if we were to approve this additional appropriation, would it just go into this master plan fund, so you could work on it, start working on it sooner than later?
I don't know when you want to start construction and all that stuff.
It wouldn't preclude anything in the future happening, I mean, I'm not sure exactly how to answer that. I mean, it's a...
Let's say we pass in the first reading, and then you come back and say, you know what, we're actually, I talked to engineer Andy Crouch, and said, hey, you know what, really $130,000 would be what we need, and we can change the amount or not.
Yeah.
Would that speed the process, help the process, or confuse the process?
Well, I'd say that I don't actually know how far along this project is, to be honest with you. I haven't had that conversation with Andy, so it's kind of hard for me to assess where exactly that is versus where we are. Obviously, we're in the budgetary assessment phase that we're under contract for, to establish project cost.
Mr. Pruitt, what if we approved it for the Spring Street corridor project from Clay'sburg to Dutch Lane? That was specifically appropriated for that corridor of the project?
I mean, now that you've approved the comprehensive plan amendment, this is one phase of a project.
We're like earmarking that.
Yeah, correct. You could do that, I think. Well, I understand.
Could you not, I mean, my question is if it's approved, could you not just contact the city engineer and say, do the sidewalk?
The difference is, is that it's part of a plan, so there'll be consistent look and feel, and the minute, the few amenities that would be added, it would all match.
It's more of a design standard.
Yeah.
I think actually, I do finally have an answer, caught me off guard a little bit. We would probably want to have design drawings incorporated for this section in the next step that we're going to take, which is actually construction drawings and design analysis. So I don't think that's been done yet necessarily on this project. I think this is a, I'm guessing, it's a rough estimation based on a dollar per square foot figure. So it'd be nice if we could actually hold off, incorporate this into the construction drawings for the entire corridor, and actually look at this area in more detail, and establish a few more features as well, that we call for in the rest of the plan.
As technical as I'm going to be, I mean, if we're appropriating $120,000 for additional sidewalks above Andy's sidewalk budget, that's something that I've been against, put it in the line, in the list, on the priority list. But if we're, if we're going to start saying that we're approving $120,000 for the Spring Street master plan, I would beg the question on if we're going to continue to use edit dollars and commit edit dollars to the project. I want to, I am very much a fan of the project in its entirety, so if we're going to start piecing together funding, I'd like to have a better idea of what, in its entirety, we're going to put together.
You know, my concern is that we had, you know, we had a fatality there, so we've been put on notice that there's a major safety concern on these sidewalks. And we told the sister of the deceased that we were going to take, make this a priority and get the sidewalks done. And that's all I'm trying to do here. It totally makes sense that we incorporate it as part of the Spring Street master plan. I don't want to mess that up or slow it down. I'd just like to, you know, speed up at least this section that there's a safety concern. That's all I'm trying to do. However we can do it, I would push for that.
Our last discussion when that happened, I mean, there's more to what happened with that fatality than lack of sidewalks. There are some sidewalks there. And what we ended with the last time this came up, well, the first time it came up, was that it would go into the pipeline, and then it would be done according to when the pipe, as the pipeline gets exhausted. I guess what we're saying now is, we have a master, a comprehensive plan here, that we know, well, we're looking into how much each corridor is going to cost. So if we want to start adding to certain parts of the corridor, then that's what we should do, but we shouldn't, for years, Clay'sburg has been overlooked, and I don't want that to happen again. And that's exactly what we're talking about doing, because there's no commitment here to fund the entire corridor. So I would strongly recommend, if we're going to appropriate something today, then it'd be for the corridor to Dutch Lane, to ensure that the phases of the project get done appropriately. And I would agree with Councilman Owen that if we're going to, it'd be better not to piecemeal it, but to figure out how we're going to do it, and then pass it, fund it.
So you're suggesting just extending the sidewalks, correct, to include?
Yeah, it's a part of the Clay'sburg corridor, it goes, just extend it all the way to Dutch Lane.
My concern is, and I drive that section maybe four or five times a day, because I live out Hamburg Pike, and I come through there, and I see children of all ages. Sometimes there's a child, maybe eight to 10 years old, have the hand of one that's five or six, that walks down that stretch. There's no sidewalk for them to walk on, and I've actually seen children have to step down in the ditch there, to get out of the way of traffic. So my concern is safety. How much is a life worth? How much is the life of a child worth? And how much extensions do we have to continue to put on and continue to deal with while we're waiting on somebody's kid to get killed? Maybe one of the, one of my family members, or maybe a family member of somebody else here. When it comes to providing the greatest deal of safety for a child, I'm for throwing out all the rules and doing whatever we have to necessary to provide for them.
I'd just say, if you talk about pipeline, there's 10-year master plan, and there's projects that have not been done, but we're adding this plan, a section which definitely needs improvement, but already has sidewalks. So this plan by itself is superseding a 10-year master plan that, you know, it's been in existence for almost 10 years now, and there's still projects not done. And that's fine, because we, as situations come up, we recognizes, we recognize the need for, to make deviations from the plan. Sometimes there's opportunities to do more, because there's grants, or there's matching funds, or there's economic development. And sometimes, because of safety concerns, we have to deviate, and I think that's what the case is here. But it totally makes sense to be part of the Spring Street master plan, and I think that's the way we should do it. But I like the fact that Mr. Pruitt says, hey, because we're aware of it, and from the whole design, we should probably start from, just do this section first, which is fantastic, it's a win-win, I think. I just want to try to fund it, so that we can move it along.
One other comment I would make is, I appreciate your comments, Ron. And the last piece from, I guess, Dutch Lane north, that was all designed, and at that point in time, there is discussion on if we took that design and took it down to eastern. So we're talking about, if you look at the sidewalk up there, that's the design, and if, if up until just tonight, or the last minute or two, this, this project was, the project that Nathan's talking about, was going to end at eastern, so it still can end at eastern. We could just carry the one that's farther north, that exact same look, down to eastern, and address the safety issues that the lady that came and talked to us about, we said we would address, and also, Ron, she's firsthand. So I think we all want to get it done, but if we have to wait on the full plan to evolve, well, it'll be two years. That's my concern.
We can agree on funding the Clay'sburg corridor at the next meeting. It doesn't have to evolve, it's already done, I mean...
It takes two, three readings, right? It's going to take two meetings to pass this forward, anyway.
And you're just voting to advertise.
Yeah.
Well, once you start the process, then...
My point was that making it part of the Spring Street plan, it makes it more than a sidewalk project, which I would be all in favor of. And, you know, hopefully, we can move forward more quickly than we usually do on finding ways to put together the funding for this once we get the costs. I don't know. But if we want to talk about safety concerns, and we need to do this because it's a safety concern, we lost a million-dollar fire truck on Charlestown Pike a couple of years ago. Let's widen Charlestown Pike because it's a safety concern. That's a $15 million project. We can find a safety concern anywhere in the city, and what happened here was tragic, and we should take care of it. We've got to figure out how to do that responsibly. And that's just my opinion, and that won't change.
Let's get back on task. I appreciate the conversation, but we do have additional appropriation to vote on. So can, there's not any further question, anything from Heather? I will entertain a motion, and we'll have the public hearing next meeting.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to, that we do additional appropriation of $120,000 for the sidewalks. And let me say that, in the meantime, before it comes back to us, I'm going to talk to Mr., if it passes, I'll talk to Mr. Pruitt and our engineer to see how we can incorporate it as part of the master plan and move forward, making it the first stage of the Clay'sburg sidewalk or street scape project.
I'll second.
What were the readings, though? You want to pass on the first reading?
First and second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second to pass 2017 OR 42 on the first and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, seven more.
That's correct. Okay, Mr. Merkley, the notice collection of tax increment in Jefferson, Indiana allocation area for 2017, tax payable 2018.
As you all were aware, state law requires that the redevelopment commission notify the different entities regarding whether or not it intends to capture all of the assessed valuation within our TIFs. The redevelopment commission has notified the various subdivisions of local government that there is no excess assessed value that may be allocated, and the statute also requires that this notice be given to the city council, and that you accept this into the record.
So the motion needs to be to accept it.
Accept.
Got a motion and accept it to accept this. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Les. Larry, city council attorney report.
In deference to Mr. Hawkins' anniversary. Have the anniversary done. I've never been able to find a woman to tolerate me long enough. I'll make it brief. The answer to the question that was asked about suspending the rules and whether your abstention would have any effect upon it, yes, it would, so you all know in advance. Sustaining when you vote to suspend the rules doesn't make it go away, it has to be unanimous of all the members present, so you can't get away with abstention and sustaining rules. And if any time I, if you're a professional or offensive, when I apologize, I just tried to answer the questions that I'm asking you before, after, during. So, if I'm socially unacceptable after something that comes from growing up with Eric and Sharon, raising the elephant.
All right, thank you. Is there any public comment?
None.
None? Okay, then I will move on to council comments with District One, Councilperson White.
Take one, the motion passes.
I just want to reiterate that I want to, I would like for us to be careful not to fall in the same pattern that past councils have fallen into, in that plans stop at, go from the river to 10th Street, or from the river to 14th Street, and then skip over Clay'sburg, which is an area of town that always gets skipped over. We have a lot of developments going on in downtown. We have a lot of businesses moving into the area, and to make it more attractive for those businesses and for the folks living there, like I mentioned with the front porch project that we have through the Urban Enterprise Zone, we've got some art projects out there. The mayor had done, I believe, in the council last year, from 12th Street to Stansifer Avenue, down to the, over the train bridge. So, this is an area that, all I've heard over the years is that, why does the historic design and landscaping stop at 10th Street? And we have proactive director of planning, we've got support from the Urban Enterprise Zone, we seem to have the budget to get this project done, so I just want to make sure that we don't, I mean, as Mr. Samuel said, I believe, the, if I heard him correctly, the sidewalk coming down Hamburg Pike, there was some talk about finishing it to Eastern Boulevard, but it's just talk that happened. It didn't get done. So, I don't want to end up in that situation. There's been a lot of hard work in-house done. There's currently a $35,000 contract that UEZ is paying for to figure out what this project's going to look like, and with a total commitment now of $300,000, there will probably be another $300,000 committed later. It depends on our revenues, but it may be more, but I'm not, we don't know what our revenue is going to be yet for next year. We're going to have those budget discussions here in the next month, Nathan and I. So, I just, we've got, as we heard, or as you may have heard, there's a news article in the News and Tribune, and also today in the Courier, that we have a six-month letter of intent with Wayland Ventures to develop spring and market. So, we're looking forward to putting commercial on the ground floor and satisfying our problem with lack of density downtown, with apartments on the top. So, we want to make sure that we are, we continue the progress we're making, because my nightmare is that what Scott Hawkins said comes true, and that we end up with two different cities. So, if we make downtown an attractive downtown, and we continue to do that, then we continue to attract people to both parts of the city, as well as in the middle, because we'll have infrastructure that's aesthetically pleasing and moves the way it should, that's walkable, that's bikeable, that, so we're trying to create that environment, and so I just hope that we keep that in mind as we move forward in the budgeting procedure.
Okay. Okay. Councilperson Astani.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm going to say something now. I respect Mr. White, Councilman White, as far as defending his district, but just want to remind him that there's a District Two, Three, and Four, in between those two cities that are being built, that still have some...
And Five.
Still, and, well, Five starts kind of getting out there, but, yeah. They also have amenities, needs for...
District Three is great, Dustin. Thank you. Councilperson District Three, yeah, Councilperson, yeah.
Well, you know, I always bring up the holidays. So, I hope everyone had a good Fourth of July holiday with their families. It was much needed, great weather, good parade, saw lots of you out there. The only other thing I have is that, as most of you know, I will be gone from our next meeting. I leave for a very long trip to India next week, and I'll be gone until August 5th. While I'm there, I will be working with the local government and Department of Agriculture to help educate and train some of their rural farmers on water conservation and irrigation techniques because of the flooding that they have with monsoon season. So, I will be very interested to see what an India flood looks like compared to a Jeffersonville flood. And we'll, yeah, I'll be sure to take pictures and bring them back, so we can maybe compare the two, so.
Okay. That's all I've got. Thank you. Councilperson Hawkins.
I have nothing.
Okay. Councilperson Owen.
I've ruled out several things, but I'll condense. Probably at our next meeting, I anticipate it will be by your next meeting, you will see a ordinance of additional appropriation. What that is, we will be asking to appropriate a minimal amount of funds that we have already receiveded for the Save the Fieldhouse Initiative. We want to appropriate those into the non-reverting funds, so that we can pay some expenses that we've had in relation to some of the events that we've held. It'll be a minimal amount, I believe, and it will all be accounted for in the receipts that we've generated. Also, wanted to re-thank the Planning and Zoning Department for the Spring Street plan. That plan would have cost tens of thousands of dollars to put together, and having it done in-house saves time and money, and your efforts are appreciated, because it's something, as you mentioned, that's never been done before. We've never done an in-house plan, which drove me nuts, but thank you again. Very excited about the plan. The last thing, I'll skip a few others, but the last thing I'll say is, the county council met tonight, this is their normal meeting night, and they approved a resolution for the Regional Cities Initiative, which is very exciting. And if you don't know what that is, I'd be happy to explain it to you later, or you can go look it up. But Clark County is now in, Floyd County is in, I believe Scott County is still in from last time, and we're going to be reaching out to Harrison and Washington, I believe, when Southern Indiana is spearheading that effort, and it could be very beneficial for us here in the city of Jeff. It just depends on how things turn out with the state and where some other future funding could come from. The Regional Cities Initiative last year gave out $123 million to local communities, and 0% of it came to our area.
And our taxpayer dollars?
Our taxpayer dollars went to help fund it, but it never came back to us, because we could not come together to form an RDA in the past. So, kudos to the county council for doing that. 70% of the state of Indiana lives under a regional development authority, and we do not yet, so, that's all.
Okay. Councilperson now.
Yes. When, Edwin, you were talking about extending those sidewalks, it's a real touchy point with me, and especially at this time, one of the things, any time that there's a child endangered, it affects me. But, and also, the young man that drowned it fishing down the falls was a relative of mine.
Oh, sorry for that.
So, I'm just maybe a little emotional at this time. But the one thing that I do want, and I passed out this paper to introduce Andre Shelby. Andre Shelby is a Jeffersonville boy. He grew up here, went to Jeff High School and everything, went to the Navy, and while he was in the Navy, he had an accident, and he's paralyzed from the waist down. Andre went through quite a bit of things, but I've been looking at the information that I've got of him, of his accomplishments, and he's got some amazing accomplishments, and to accomplishing, to accomplish winning a gold medal. He won the gold medal at the Paralympics, and something that we should, we should really and truly be proud of. And I would like for the Jeffersonville City Council to recognize the accomplishments of Andre. And also, his father was a business owner here in Jeffersonville. He owned Shelby Service Station down across from Hughes Hardware for all these years. And I just think that, you know, we should have a plaque made, or a plaque put up somewhere to recognize all that he's done. And as a veteran, I would just want to read these things that he accomplished. Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medal, Joint Meritorious Unit Award, Navy Meritorious Unit Commendation, Coast Guard Meritorious Unit with Operation, Navy E-Ribbon, D5, Navy Good Conduct, four of those, Navy Defense II, Armed Forces Expeditionary Medal, Southwest Asia Service, Navy Sea Service, Navy Recruiting Service, and Expert Pistol Medal. I mean, with all the things that he's accomplished, we can do nothing, we should do nothing less than recognize him here at the city of Jeffersonville. I'd like to see one of, maybe a painting of him down on the flood wall, and, you know, I've seen the little signs that's put on sides of the highway, recognizing different people. I think we just need to do something to let the Shelby family know that we're proud of Andre, and Andre will be here next month. He'll be here in August, and I'd like to bring him and introduce him to the council when he's here in August.
Love the idea. Anything further? Okay, Councilperson Samuel.
I'd encourage you, Ron, to get with our attorney to come up with a resolution or something, and maybe we could present it, maybe with the mayor or something to do that. And only one thing I'd say tonight is, we have a man in here that received the Commodore of the Port award, Mr. Richard Ecklin. I just saw that, I don't know if it's on Facebook or in the newspaper or where, but I don't know fully what it was for, but I know Richard does a lot for this community, and just congratulations to our Commodore.
And that was exactly it. The mayor awarded Mr. Ecklin with the Commodore of the Port award for all of his service to the city of Jeff at Board of Public Works last week, and just wanted to recognize him and say that we really appreciate all that he does, because he's around quite a bit doing a lot. Especially if you live up near me, you see him out taking care of everything, city pride.
I too was going to acknowledge, and so you'll see him at the Aquatic Center. I don't know if people realize this, but pretty much that landscaping around the Aquatic Center, Richard maintains, all around the signage, the circle there. I know Nikki sings his praises, she don't know what she do without him, so I thank you for that, but I also want to thank your wife, too, because I see her out and about. She didn't get the Commodore of the Port, but in my eyes, she deserves it, too. But I want to thank you all for all you do. And then I also wanted to, while the chief is here, Chief Kavanaugh, I just want to applaud you and thank you for how you're running your department. I know it's been tough, but especially in this lab PD where it shows everything, but your officers, I am very impressed. I've always been impressed, but it's like doing a ride-along on TV. But not only that, I'm getting a lot of positive feedback from the community. I am getting a lot of questions, and they want to see the bike patrol. And especially your community policing, but I do applaud you and thank you all for what you do to the department, and also with keeping in good touch with me, I appreciate that. Working together, we make good things happen. And also, Nathan, thank you again. I can't say enough about this. You know, Dustin brought up about Clay'sburg, but I've been saying it for a long time, we haven't talked to Carol Moon, we've always, you know, and listened to it, they feel like they've been forgotten, and, you know what, they're right. And I was glad that he spoke up and continues to speak up for them, so, thank you. And I did schedule our council pictures. It'll be August the 7th. Wayland Seals will be here at 5:45 to set up, so as soon as they get set up, then we'll be taking our pictures, so be prepared for that. And also, we've brought up on the Spring Street that UEZ is going in a different direction, and so they're wanting to fund this project and some other things, and as notified, is we're starting the budget process. I know the budget work pieces have been out. For the 2018, and if I get this wrong, Dustin, please correct me, but the 2018, UEZ is not looking to fund the Big Four maintenance, the portion that you all did, or the security for K4, so that's...
We've made no decisions about that.
I said, looking at, not, so, but...
We've made no decisions about it.
Okay. Well, if...
It's not something we would do without talking with all the parties involved.
Okay. I didn't know if we needed to look, bring that for, since they're during the budget process, if they need to add that in for next year, and then also, while Paul is here, that it may come before us sooner or later, it may not, no decision's been made, but I know that there has been brought to my attention that Duffy's Landing may or may not need to be dredged. So, I just wanted to get people to start thinking of their budgets, we need to add that in, or if they need to come, I just wanted to, I said I'd give the heads up, so I'm giving the heads up on that. And that's all I have, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam President?
Yes.
Would it be appropriate, Mr. Ellis had mentioned a plaque as well, if Mr. Shelby's going to be in in August, could we, I would like to move to authorize a plaque be made on his behalf to...
Okay.
Add a special project or whatever for...
Okay.
I don't know how much...
I was getting ready to get with Mr. Ellis on that, and then email you all out.
For the next meeting? Okay. And that would be something, we could just put in claims, right?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Anything further?
If I may, and hopefully I don't just, I just sent everyone an email with about 10 links to information about the Shelby as well.
Okay, great. Can motion still stand?
Second.
Media adjourned.